We're going to call the meeting to order first for the village board, followed by calling the role for the architectural board and the plan commission. I will ask for the role to be called for the village board.
Trustee Anson.
Here.
Trustee Doral.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
Trustee Walshleger.
Here.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
Trustee Ludkey.
Here.
President Fannerstall.
Here. All members in attendance. Now, if you'd please call the role for the architectural board and plan commission.
Certainly. Chairman Fannerstall.
Here.
David de Corsi Bower.
Here.
Tim Halquest.
Here.
Chip Schneeburger.
Here.
Ann Walshleger.
Here.
Jeff Beerman. And Dino Sykes.
We have a quorum for our architectural board and plan commission. If you'd all rise and remove your caps for the pledge of allegiance, this will be led by trustee Ludkey.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we are going to do public comments. There is a slight change, which probably doesn't affect most, but so anybody wishing to speak in public comments can come towards the podium at this time and give those comments. Even if you speak in public comments right now, you still will have your time to speak in the public hearing. While I know that's confusing, if you want to speak now from the public, you can step towards the podium. It will not take away your ability to speak in the public hearing. Mr. Fannerstall?
I'd like to speak.
Yep. If you'd like to, as a citizen.
Good evening, everyone. Jeff Anson, 726 Mansfield Court, Heartland, Wisconsin. I also own Hoggers Pub. I would just like to thank everybody that came to the event, supported the event, even if you weren't there, that supported the event that we had this weekend. It was a fundraiser for Randy Gilmore, Captain Gilmore of the fire department. He lost his apartment in a fire. It went very, very well. I have to thank all the people that did show up, too. The attendance was stellar. The group of people we had there was absolutely amazing. I cleaned up at the end of the night. I didn't pick up a cigarette, but on my whole gravel parking lot, I was expecting to spend hours doing that. There was no garbage, there was no littering, everything went in wastepaper baskets. There was no trouble, there was no fights. It was just beautiful, and there was way over a thousand people there. So I just want to thank absolutely everybody that attended. Trustee Ludkey, trustee Doral did an absolutely amazing job, helped me out at one of the tents serving beer. And trustee Walshleger was there, trustee Connor, President Fannerstall was there, Mike was in bed. But that's all right, Mike, we love you. But again, I just wanted to thank everybody, it went off great, and we raised some money for a great cause. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Please step towards the podium. Anybody that's in on Zoom that would like to speak in public comments? Last call for public comments. All right. Now we will move to the portion of the meeting, our first item, which is by the village board, this is a public hearing pursuant to ordinance section 46-40 regarding a rezoning petition for property identified as HAV0388989001 located east of Winkleman Road and north of Lisbon Road for the petition rezoning of 59.26 acres to RM3 PUD multiple-family residential and the allowance of four possible phases of construction. During the public hearing, comments will also be received about the proposed planning unit development agreement to ultimately allow the construction of one or 10 condominiums and 33 two-family buildings and 11 four-family buildings during the course of four phases. If I could have the list of people that would like to speak in the public at this time.
Want to speak, chairman of the public?
The name that we have here to speak is Heidi Brant at N59W28135 Ainsworth. When you get to the podium, please state the municipality that you are in.
I live in the town of Merton, but my property is right behind this one.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. And I've grown up in Heartland. I went to Bark River Grade School, I went to Arrowhead High School. I've been here for 55 years, so. Heartland offers an exceptional quality of life with a unique blend of many positive features: a dynamic economic environment, thriving business community, growing industrial base, lovely residential neighborhoods, convenience, small-town charm, and abundant of recreational opportunities. There are 12 lakes within five-mile radius, numerous parks, golf courses, and a number of active civic and community organizations. This is right from the Heartland Chamber of Commerce. It does not state that we have high-density multi-family neighborhoods. We do not need, nor do the residents of Heartland, Merton, and Lisbon want high-density multi-family in this area. If it was closer to the heart of town, I could understand, but not outward where it's being planned. Stone Ridge subdivision in the village of Merton went up for sale with Phase 1 on Monday, May 17th. Phase 1 has 15 lots for sale. As of today, eight of those lots are sold or reserved with the selling price of $145,000 on up. These are unimproved lots for single-family residential homes. Heartland has had 13 condos ranging in price from $175,000 to $570,000 on the market. The average time on the market, and these houses are condos are all still here, the average time on the market for these condos has been 67 days. This does not show me that condos are what residents of the Lake Country are looking for. These condos could also present a big problem for the area, especially if they become leased-out units. The declaration states lease of units, each unit or any part thereof may be rented by a written lease, provided that the term of any such lease shall not be less than one year. They also allow a family with two other non-family members living there. Is this a problem? Absolutely. Remember, the harder it is to finance a unit, the smaller the buying pool becomes, making the unit less saleable. There becomes a point where lenders won't lend because of the high investor ratio. You don't want to be stuck in that. There are situations where accomplice will become heavily investor-owned to the point where no lender will lend to the unit. This makes the unit owner that wants to sell at the mercy of what the investors will pay. Also, our PUD agreement states, "The location of entrances and exits have been designated to prevent unnecessary interference with the safe and efficient movement of traffic on surrounding streets, and the development will not create an unreasonable adverse effect upon the general traffic pattern of the surrounding neighborhood." I don't know if you, last time you've driven that way, but I can tell you right now, it's ridiculous. You cannot get out of Windrush and go east, you cannot get off a KE and go east, it's impossible. The traffic is ridiculous. "The size and quality and design of all buildings landscaping other site," and this comes from the PUD, "and other site development features in the projects will be compatible with the general character of the village and specifically to the surrounding neighborhood, and the design of the development will result in an attractive harmonious development compatible and not adversely affecting the property values of the surrounding neighborhood. Clustering of residential development is permitted within the site provided that permanent common open space is permanently preserved, so the overall density of residential use permitted within the site never exceeds 110 units. Structures types will be compatible with other structural types permitted in the underlying basic-use district elsewhere in the village. Provisions are being made for the construction of private sewer, water, and stormwater facilities within the project with connection to public facilities and the continuing maintenance and operation of these private facilities by the Sand Hill Condominium Association, who will be led by the declarant. One fact I learned when speaking to the residents of Windrush is that the declarant has not been able to repair the heater on the pool in Windrush for four years. What guarantees do you have that he will repair the facilities? Developers should establish and deposit $2,000 in a condominium statutory reserve account for water and sewer maintenance? That's ridiculous. $2,000 for water and sewer maintenance within the 10 days of the recording? How would $2,000 cover anything? It wouldn't even cover the cost of somebody to moab to the site. What's the inspection fee deposit? What kind of security deposit is there? Insurance? Workman's compensation? You're saying he only needs a $500,000 work comp policy and comprehension liability of a million? If you've ever been in the construction field, and I used to own a construction company, we had a million dollars work comp minimum and $2 million for general liability with a $5 million umbrella. What the insurance he has there will cover absolutely nothing. Typically, now, big projects, they have $10 million of insurance to do them. The number, location, and style of units, the maximum number of units we know is supposed to be 110. Subject to further separation under declarant currently anticipates that the units shall be positioned as shown on the condominium plat, but declarant reserves the right to change location if required to achieve the best development in the opinion of the declarant. The units shall consist of units of the general size as shown on the condominium plat, but declarant also reserves the right to change the size of the units in order to meet market requirements. All units constructed within the expansion area shall be for residential use. Do not set a precedent here that our residential land can be zoned for high-density multi-family. Seepman has owned that land since 2004. He's had plenty of time to develop it. Why should the fact that he's now decided, as we're heading out of a pandemic, when we have a very vulnerable market, and that he wants to do high-density because that's the only way he can make money? He could continue renting it to the farmer. Farmer's probably paying him at least $11,000 a year to rent it, and his taxes are only 200 bucks. There's a profit there. The land was gifted to him in 2004. I mean, we don't need this. We don't need high-density. And I also heard that he's already acquired or is about to acquire the farm field next to Windrush. If we start setting a precedent that we're going to go with high-density multi-family, we're going to, next developer's going to say, "Well, you let him have it, why can't I have it?" Where's this going to go? This is the Lake Country. I know my neighbors already down the street, they just moved here from Chicago this December. They moved here because it was single-family residential. They've already told me, if they put in condos behind me, we're leaving. We can live everywhere we want. We picked this area because of the single-family residential feel and the community, but we can find it somewhere else if we're not going to have it here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Even if you did not put your name on the list, does anybody want to speak in the public hearing? The public hearing is open at this time.
I will.
Please, either you can raise your hand or step right towards the podium, but yep, just so we know.
My name is Suzie Gallic, and I live in Windrush subdivision.
Address, please.
Oh, 1609 Whistling Hills Circle.
Okay.
In Windrush.
Got it. Thank you.
I don't have a nice script. There are a couple comments I would like to make. Obviously, we are against what's going on. We moved here about three years ago, and for many of the reasons that people live here, we look for, you know, a nice community of single-family residents without a lot of traffic. My kids go to Merton School, and every day when I pick them up, I have a very hard time getting off of K and back onto Lisbon. So, you know, it's been a constant issue. We are having accidents there all the time. I mean, our house sits in such a way that I can see kind of the intersection. I would say there are probably accidents every other week on that road. The one thing I think I'd like to bring up is, we have a fence in our neighborhood, on the front of our neighborhood, and it was brought up in our latest HOA meeting that we should remove that fence, a portion of that fence, because it keeps getting damaged from traffic, and we have to keep paying for it out of our own dues. So Seepman and the board recommended that we remove that part of the fence because of traffic. So we all agreed, we don't want to keep paying for it because we keep having accidents there. So I think that's the thing that concerns me the most, is we're going to continue to add more traffic to that intersection. We're, you know, we're putting lives at risk. You go over that hill, it's 45 miles an hour, you can barely turn out, you know, and see the traffic coming on. So I think, I mean, this is just going to create, you know, a bigger traffic situation and more risk and liability for the community. There has been no discussion at making it a roundabout, or I guess the discussion has been, it's not in our 10-year plan. And so that's probably the biggest concern from our neighborhood. I think the other concern we have, I mean, the pool heater has definitely been an ongoing issue. But I think what I'm most disappointed in hearing about this is, we had our HOA meeting, and it was presented to us that it was already approved. It was hyped up, this is what's going in, these are going to be beautiful residences, really led the neighborhood to believe that this was already approved. And in fact, when people found out it wasn't approved, it lit up our Facebook page, our neighborhood Facebook page, at which point Seepman reached out to many of the residents and on our, you know, our community email, and wanted to address everyone's concerns, which point we had to remove him from our Facebook page because we needed to be able to have, you know, community conversation about what's best for our community. So, I would recommend that this not move forward with high-density.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak in the public hearing? Ryan, do we have anyone on Zoom that wants to speak in the public hearing?
I would like to speak.
All right. If you could state your name and your address, sir?
My name is Michael Brant. I'm at North 59 West 28135 Ainsworth Road. I apologize to the board that I couldn't be there personally tonight, it's due to work. I have to work out of town this week. And I want to thank the board for this opportunity to speak. I as well am completely against the multi-family unit development. I would be happy to see a development of single-family lots like are happening throughout our community. I think that the people moved to our Lake Country area, Heartland, Merton, Lisbon, and so on, and surrounding areas, to have a single-family home, a single-family lot, a community such as those that have been built. I think over in Bristol, you know, over the years, they I think over in Bristol, you know, over the years, they've had a very, very hard time selling their condos. They've sold, but I helped build that, that whole development many years ago when I was a young lad, and helped grade it, and I remember condos still being for sale there, maybe five to eight years later, that were never sold. And we're presenting something here, and, well, actually, it's being kind of shoved down our throats to our community to accept. And, well frankly, I know John and Jim Seetman from the industry, and I want to say that it's really sad for me to know all of the lies that they have told this community over and over and over. And this, it's sad to see that this board is accepting that and that, the lies. I think what we really need to do, and now I'm speaking to the board, not just the community, is we need to wake up and look at the facts, truly look at the facts of what's being presented here and what's being told to the community, and not just put blind shields on and, because these guys are developers and blah, 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 okay? What Ms. Brandt said there is absolutely true. As board members, and you are to serve the community, you got to look at what the community wants. Community don't want this. They truly want to see single-family lots if it's going to be developed. And they're giving you a crack if they're going to tell you that it's, you know, I guess my suggestion would be, maybe, maybe it would be a little bit more acceptable to the community, and it should be more acceptable to the board, that maybe Mr. Seetman, Jim, and John should go live in the community. Go live in that community. Go live in that property for, oh, two years, five years? Are they willing to do it? Are any one of you board members willing to go and live in that community? Remember that?
This meeting is being recorded.
Remember when you're, you know, voting on this tonight? Because the community doesn't want it. My wife has spent weeks and days going house door-to-door to try to get the truth. And every, every time that I heard anybody, it was, no, we don't want this. And now, then, then the last meeting, I'm hearing that we want to drill a well. Heartland's got five wells already, okay? We're going to drill a well? You guys going to work a deal out with Seetman to have a well over there? You know what? The well doesn't need to be there. It doesn't need to be there. You're going to, you're going to hurt Lisbon, you're going to hurt Merton, you're going to hurt the entire community right there if you drill a well there. You're going to dry everybody's walls up. Think about it. I spoke, but I need to speak, I guess, and do what's right. The community don't want this. Let's have single-family homes throughout the whole development. That's what should be there, that's, that's what it's zoned. I don't think, I don't think one minute that anybody in our community wants to have that zoning changed. So I have to do, have to say, and I'd like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else on Zoom that would like to speak in the public hearing? Any other members or, or citizens or people present that would like to speak in this public hearing?
I live at 1628 Upland Court.
Can you say it again, just for the mic to pick it up?
I live in 1628 Upland Court in the Windrush Estates. I just moved in June.
What's your name?
Oh, sorry, Amanda Salinas.
Thank you.
And I just moved there in June, and I moved there because of the residential living, you know, neighborhoods. And honestly, I can tell you that if this kind of stuff is going to be happening all over the fields around our house, we'll move. I mean, this is the reason why we moved, is to be in Lake Country, and I echo the statements of everyone else, that I'm not for it at all. So I'll just keep mine short and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak?
So my name is Jim Hurley, and I'm a resident at 603 Southern Oak Drive. And I too just moved probably in August this past year. And I moved out here from Monominee Falls. We have, where we had, you know, multifamily housing there too, in our subdivision. But I wanted something that was more residential, more beautiful. And I was just remarking, you know, this weekend to my wife, how incredibly beautiful it is out here. It's just picturesque, park-like, and gorgeous. So we're, we're happy that we moved out here. And just like slightly, more than an hour later, someone knocked on our door saying, hey, just, you know, down the street, there's going to be a big multifamily development going in. And, you know, I was really disappointed with that when I heard it, because that's where I came from, and I was moving out here for a specific reason, to be in a beautiful area, to be in, you know, a residential area that was single-family. And, you know, so I'm disappointed to hear this, and I, I'm not for it. I'd like to hear more about it, I guess, but at this point, I would say I'm definitely not for that, and I just want you guys to know that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in the public hearing? If no one steps towards the podium in about 15 seconds, then I'll close the public hearing. But if anybody would like to speak, please step towards the podium at this time for the public hearing. Anybody for a public hearing? Want to speak? At this time, I am going to close the public hearing. With the public hearing being closed, our next item, just for clarification, is for and by the Architectural Board and Plan Commission. This is for discussion and recommendation to the Village Board regarding the petition for rezoning to RM3 for the PUD multiple-family residential and the allowance of four possible phases of construction, and the proposed planned unit development agreement as more fully described in Agenda Item Number One above on the agenda. But you heard what we discussed in Item One. With that, the way I would like to run this, before the board starts discussing, I think it would be appropriate, if Mr. Seetman wants to speak, since this is his property, to allow him to speak. And then I would like to go around from the administrator to the engineer, to the building inspector, and then to our attorney, if any of you would want to speak. I just want to do it in that order. I'm going to try to really keep a cap and keep this organized as we go through this. So right now, this is Architectural Board and Plan Commission. Mr. Seetman, if you do want to speak, please feel free to step forward. If you do not, you do not have to. Totally up to you.
I don't think we have to add anymore.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Seetman has indicated from the back of the room, and I'm only saying because this is on video, that, that he, he doesn't have anything to add. I'm going to turn it over to the administrator and just go around the horn, as I said. If, if, and no one has to add anything, I'm just kind of leaving it up to staff so that the Architectural and Board and Plan Commission have any info they have. So if there's anything to add, you got anything?
No, I mean, we've worked on this project. I think the concept plan came at the tail end of 2020, and it's been processed, that we've gone through several Plan Commission meetings, board set up a public hearing, and now the public hearing this evening. So I think we've put together the information and presented it.
Mr. Atman, our village engineer.
Ryan Atman, village engineer. As Administrator Rhodey had mentioned, staff has been working with the applicant for a number of months on the development of this project. So the substantially complete plans and PUD agreement, as well as all the exhibits, was presented to the Joint Architectural Board and Plan Commission on April 19th. They were substantially complete, and there was a memo that I prepared that identified just a handful of items that I would just say are technical in nature for completion. At that Plan Commission meeting, Plan Commissioners had a few other items that I would characterize as technical in nature. But I think the materials are substantially informed for the Plan Commission to consider an approval to the board for you to take action tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our building inspector, Ms. Hussinger, if you have anything you want to say?
I have.
Hussinger, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that in your voice, you know, it's Hussinger, not Hussinger.
I have nothing more to add.
Okay. Mr. Delamora? The village attorney.
I would like to share some additional information that the Plan Commission, the Arc Board, and the board has not heard before. It is my understanding that the developer, even though he is asking for approval of four phases, he will only do the first two phases initially, but he is going to be posting a letter of credit for all of the improvements that will be installed during the four phases. And the amount is to be determined, to be calculated based on the engineering plans that I think may be approaching the final stage for estimates by our engineer. And supplementing that will be the need for the posting of a proof of insurance, which is provided for in the development agreement itself, and is consistent with what the village has done in other instances. Other than that, I have nothing further to add.
Can you, Mr. Delamora, can you just stay at the podium for a second? Only because, to the board, members of the Architectural Board and Plan Commission. And Hector, I'm only keeping you there. Sorry you're standing, but I'm only keeping you there because there's a microphone there. Are there questions while we have them in front of mics? You can call them up for questions. If anybody, any from the Plan, anybody from the Plan Commission or Architectural Board has questions for staff, or the developer themselves, they could. I see an indication. So, Commissioner Wallscheiger, the floor is yours.
You said, I just want to make sure I heard this right. They're going to do Phase One and Two first together, and they're going to take a letter of credit out for all four phases?
That is correct.
So what happens, I don't know where I heard this, that Phases Three and Four might not get done, or if they decide One and Two don't work, they don't have to do Three and Four? Is that correct?
Well, they will still have to put up the money for those utilities that have to be installed. So that will make the land in Phases Three and Four more desirable and useful.
So the utilities will be installed?
As a result of the letter of credit.
Okay. So there's no guarantee, though, that Three and Four will be completed?
No, but there is guarantee that the utilities will be paid for.
Okay, thank you.
If you have any other questions, ask them out.
No, I'm done.
For anyone.
That was as a commissioner.
Do you have anyone else? Okay, I'm just making sure. Any other commissioners have any questions that they have for, for staff?
I have one question.
And just saying, Jeff, you got the floor?
As far as the sanitary system, it says that they're looking, considering a shallow gravity system with a private pumping station and pressure system. Is that still under consideration, or how is that being addressed?
I have not seen the plans. I was given the understanding that they are going to be installing a hybrid system, that's my term, which will consist of components of a gravity system and a pumping system, grinder pump system, that's my term. And the reason for that is that the topography of the land, I'm not personally familiar with the topography, is such that if they go with a complete gravity system, while it can be done, it will result in some of the piping having to be installed as deep as 25 or so feet into the ground. And I do not know from a technical standpoint or a cost standpoint what that will entail. However, we did discuss with the developer that there should be some mechanism to maintain these pumps, because they have a limited lifespan, and they also have to be replaced. And it was my understanding that the intention is to disclose that to the purchaser and make arrangements so that the entire subdivision pays in that respect, because it's a system in its entirety and a system that will be privately owned by all of the owners.
And then the follow-up question was, of mine, is I know some of the systems around town that are pressurized don't have an onsite generator, and I think DPW goes around and tests, or they plug in something to make sure if there's a power outage, that the system works without an onsite generator. I presume they're going to have an onsite generator in the site, and that's going to be maintained by them.
I will yield that question to the engineer.
Commissioner Beerman?
I, I think there, the hybrid system would be grinder pumping stations, private individually per unit. I'll say that it is a private sewer system that has to be built to the state plumbing codes, and the point of interest for the village is where it connects to the village's system, which is at the south end of the property at County Highway K. And as of the last meeting, they were still under consideration evaluating the option of if it would be the hybrid system or the gravity system. So there are a couple elements that were discussed at the April 19th Plan Commission that I would suggest the Plan Commissioners, you know, would put forth if they're going to forward a recommendation for approval, that they point to that being conditional on those elements that the Plan Commission identified on April 19th. One of which was, you know, the verifying of what the sewer system would be. Another item was the completing of the TIA so they can get the highway connection permits. There were a couple more items relative to whether or not the public path system would be plowed or not. And then there was a suggestion to reconfigure the bike path orientation near County Highway K. So there are some items within the April 19 minutes that, at the staff level, we would verify that those are, you know, done to an acceptable level.
Thank you.
You, just to clarify, we do have someone from DPW here. Do you want to have them answer as well on that, or are you good?
I'm good, because Ryan basically stated that, that the connection point, that's when Village of Harlan responsibly takes over. I just don't want to, because of the power outage, make sure that... I just don't want to, because of the power outage, make sure that it has someone approving the plan, indeed, that there's, you know, backup generators and stuff like that.
Sure.
Efficient to handle the whole system if there wasn't a huge power failure.
And the only reason I ask is just to make sure, because we had someone from DPW here. So, good, good. Anyone else, any other commissioner have anything for this? Now, again, so everybody remembers, this is the Architectural and Plan Commission discussion and recommendation to the village board regarding the petition rezoning to RM3 with the PUD multiple-family residential and so on and so forth, as stated on the agenda. Commissioner Schneber, did you have something?
Yes.
The floor is yours.
Yes, line 306, far as the public trails, if we can work that, plow the path in winter into that, it'd be great, on the public portion of the asphalt.
Yield. I'm sorry, could you state the question again? I didn't hear it, or the statement.
Following of the asphalt, public portion of the trails, in order.
You're asking what it? I don't know the answer to that. Well, go ahead, thank you.
There were at least two Plan Commissioners on April 19th that made the suggestion that they desire for the public portion of the path, which is paved in asphalt, to be plowed in the winter. To staff's knowledge, there's one other trail in the village that's required to be plowed during the winter, and it is the asphalt path between Lake Country High School and Woodlands Court. And it's because it's over a sewer and water line for accessibility. But generally speaking, off-road bike paths in the village are privately owned by neighborhood associations, and generally, they are not plowed in the winter. But there was a request or suggestion by at least two Plan Commissioners that they would desire for this path to be plowed. So that, I guess that's a determination that should be made, or a suggestion by the Plan Commission to the village board for consideration.
I should add that that topic was touched on several times during the discussions that were had. And I came away with the understanding that the overall practice of the village with regards to public trails is not to maintain them during the winter, per se. And there were comments made to the effect that there should be some consistency throughout the village. And if there were an insistence on the maintenance of these trails, it might raise the expectation, or perhaps the obligation of the village, to devote resources and manpower to the maintenance. And then the other issue that we discussed subordinate to that was, to what degree are they to be maintained, depending on where they are, depending on the nature of the storm and so forth. The two recently approved projects involving the Newman condominiums and also the development, the apartment multi-family complex, six buildings complex that were approved by the village do not require any maintenance of the trails there. Bear in mind that those trails are not hard improved surfaces, either asphalt or concrete.
Anything else, Mr. Schneber?
I would say the maintenance of following of the pathways would be part of the homeowners' association costs, not the village.
Okay, and when we, when we get to, if a motion is made to send this on to the village board, we'll be able to talk about that at that time. But if, unless you have more questions, I don't want to take the floor away from you. It's still yours, okay? I have a couple. Does anybody else from the, any other commissioners have anything?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, sorry, I almost forgot about you. My apologies. The floor is yours.
It was a tight schedule for me getting on, sorry. Yeah, I mean, I think a number of comments were made in the April 19th meeting that definitely need to be included, in my opinion, as far as the layout of the trail network, as far as, you know, some of the specific aspects that. As far as the maintenance of trails is concerned, I think, to me, the analogy is we expect, we expect residents to plow the sidewalk, for example, outside the front of their house, right? I certainly do. And I think that the way I look at it is if the trails are more natural trails, in other words, they're wood chip trails, they're really there for, you know, recreational leisure purposes, I don't believe they need to be plowed during the winter. But if they're there in lieu of sidewalks, which is the case of this development, this development does not have, from my understanding, sidewalks, correct me if I'm wrong, then I think there is a responsibility, much like, you know, I have, to maintain a sidewalk on my property, to maintain those asphalt pathways. That's just my opinion, but just wanted to put that comment in there. I think, you know, to address a couple of the comments on density that came up, you know, I did review the comprehensive plan for the Village of Harlan and take a look at the density that is recommended for this property, which is between one and two and a half units per acre. And this development fits within kind of what our comprehensive plan says. So I don't want, which is, which is low-density residential. So, you know, this isn't high-density residential housing. It still meets our plan definition of low-density residential. So I want to make sure that that's clear to everyone.
Anything else while the floor is yours, Mr. Decoisiebauer?
No, I think that's it, as long as the comments from the April meeting get incorporated in and addressed by staff, then I think it's good.
Good, thank you. I have just a few minor comments, if no one else. I think we made it through everyone. I just, I, I agree with the statement that was just made. If we have sidewalks in front of our house, we shovel them. I think that is the responsibility of the homeowners to make sure they're shoveled. Or if they choose to go a different route and have their association pay dues to do that, I just wanted to throw in that I, I think that it is appropriate, for those of us that live in the village, admittedly, there is not a sidewalk in front of my house. Across the street, there is. And those people shovel, and in a lot of areas, people have them, some have them, some don't. But as we, the reason that we put all these trails in is for connectivity. And I do think, if anything, it would fall on the responsibilities of the, of the homeowner. So I do agree with that. However, they decide to do it, along with that, it isn't very often that I've heard of someone getting ticketed for not doing it. So, even though there is an ordinance for that. But also, I guess, not I guess, I am going to throw out to our administrator, our engineer, and our attorney, and our building inspector. I, on the Plan Commission, am under the understanding that since recommendations that came from the Plan Commission, and even things that came from the village board when the public hearing was set, it is my understanding that to the best of their ability and with an expedient nature, that the developer has taken care of and addressed to the best of their ability, some things take time, everything that was asked of them. Is there anything that's left out there that they did not address? I just want to make sure it's clear for not only the Plan Commission, but obviously the village board is sitting here.
I think from a technical standpoint, they have, obviously, from the Plan Commission meeting, there were some items that were discussed, like the, like the winter maintenance of the trail, that, you know, ultimately, we need some direction on. We can, we can put that into the agreement, or we can not have that in the agreement. But all the technical items were, were discussed and incorporated, and the developer did not have any issue with, so, not to my knowledge.
I'm just, I think we're all, I feel like the developer, really, after getting recommendation, did it all. I'm just confirming with staff for our Plan Commission here that.
I can confirm that, I agree with that. As long as the commissioners reference the April 19th meeting with the items that were identified that need to be addressed.
Okay. Ryan, do you, sorry, Mr. Atman, do you have those right in front of you? I do not have a list of those items. I think it'd be appropriate if we could state them for the record. If someone has them, I think that's appropriate.
I can do that.
Thank you very much. Sorry to put you on the spot, I just, I think it's appropriate to have it on the record. And take your time.
Okay, number one would be a confirmation of their final sewer system design, their private final sewer system design.
He's a wonderful engineer, I didn't tell him that this was coming, so take your time, I'm sorry for putting you on the spot.
Number two, obtaining the County Highway Connection permit for their three intersections. Number four. Number three would be providing a direction on the winter maintenance of the public paved path that is being provided as a part of this development. What number am I at?
Yes, it's number four.
Number four, to evaluate reconfiguring the path configuration at County Highway K, that would be the pedestrian path configuration. Number five, consideration of an easement in the northerly direction for future pedestrian pathway for connectivity. And the last item related to the County Highway permit for the intersections is to allow staff to evaluate the intersection configurations, should the county request modifications from what the applicant has designed. And those are the items.
Thank you. And that, to clarify, that's from the April 19th meeting.
Yes.
Those were the items.
Yep.
While I still, Mr. Delamora, did you have anything to add to that? For those items?
I've already, excuse me, I've already made reference to the letter of credit.
Yep.
Which was an issue. And then the insurance documentation, those are the two legal considerations.
Mr. Hussinger? Hussinger?
I have nothing to add.
So while I have the floor, I'm going to add one last thing, because I think it's important for when the Plan Commission sends this to the Board, the village board addressed something, they called something, that having to do with that well. And even though it was back for a public hearing now, and it's at the Plan Commission, I want to clarify, and I believe, I'm, I think I know the answer to this, I believe the answer is yes, they have. I believe that the developer has done everything within their power as quickly as possible for a smooth transition in obtaining the well, which was a direction that came from the village board. Is that in any way untrue? Because I feel that they have done as much as they can, and we are currently going through the process, but they've done everything they can. If it's not, please, both of you, I'd like an answer from both of you.
Well, at the beginning, I introduce the topic of addressing the well, even though it was not on the track where this development's taking place. The commonality that I saw at that point in time was the fact that the two properties were owned by the same individual. And the well itself was something that had been studied by the village at least 20 years previous. And it was part of an overall effort on the part of the village to maintain a viable and robust water system. In other words, to provide sufficient water for looping throughout the whole system in the whole village. And that would, of course, include this particular development. The well itself was not immediately necessary in order for this development to be approved or to be serviced. But I felt, from my perspective, as an outsider, that the village would never have any more leverage than it had at this point in looking at this particular situation. And even when we looked at the studies, there was no guarantee there were indications that this well site was a good prospect. I was concerned that if this was not an issue addressed at this point, there might be future application for further development on the vacant parcel, and it would cloud the issue. As it has turned out, I ultimately concluded that the best way to bring this issue to a head was for the village to take up the approach that the developer had suggested when he stood here at this podium and invited the village to utilize its eminent domain authority. So the village has passed a resolution of necessity indicating that this was an improvement that was of importance to the entire community. And as a result, the process has been launched. Up to this point, there has not been anything for the owner of the property to do, except to cooperate and provide us information concerning the location of that well, because it was identified with precision to the point that it could be identified on a map to be a two-by-two-inch area. But there were also areas around it that had to be given some consideration. The owner has made his engineering firm available to us to facilitate in the generation of the map that was attached to the resolution, which the Board itself enacted. And at this point in time, we're awaiting the appraiser to come back with a proposed value for the village to consider. The next step in the process would be for the village then to tender that appraisal to the owner. And the owner, under the Chapter 32 of the Wisconsin statutes, the condemnation statute, would have the right to request that the village expands his own appraisal of the property if he feels that that appraisal is not appropriate from his perspective. So the answer to your question is yes.
Thank you, actually, because I feel that the, that the owner of the land did, did, did do everything that they should do.
Yeah.
You know, in working with us, so. Mr. Atman, if you have anything to add?
I would say yes.
And with that, I will, I will yield the floor. If any commissioner wants to say something that hasn't already been said, they can. And with that, also, if no one needs to speak again, it would be appropriate to table this for a future meeting, or to make a motion to send it to the village board that is seated here, also at this joint meeting, unless anybody has anything to add that hasn't already been discussed.
Decoisiebauer, quick clarification from the village engineer. So out of the last meeting, a request was made to take a look at where Terry Lane, proposed Terry Lane, would intersect with the proposed County Highway KE relocation. Did that, what was the result of that evaluation? Did that, what was the result of that evaluation?
The applicant is in the process of completing the TIA, and they're evaluating that intersection as a part of that TIA effort. And again, they need to secure the permit from the County, Waukesha County, for those intersections. And that item was detailed in the April 19th Plan Commission meeting minutes, that that intersection configuration will be evaluated by village staff, which I am a part of.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that it was going to be evaluated, because it could have, it could have implications for the locations of stormwater ditches, of where that road is located, for the layout. I just want to make sure when we're making a recommendation to approve to the village board that, that there is the understanding that there could be changes to the way this looks, potentially.
I, I agree with that.
And that intersection is the furthest north intersection, and that would be to serve Phase Three and Four. So there's, there's time, just so that the board knows that that needs to be evaluated to confirm the design that's on the table today. And again, it needs to be approved by Waukesha County.
And then the last clarification is for the village attorney, which is the letter of credit includes utilities, but I'm assuming because these are private roads, that it would not include costs to install the roads?
Get him?
It does.
Oh, okay.
It does?
Yep.
Okay, good.
It was, he was just asking a question for the village attorney, but I think the administrator answered.
Your previous comment, could you repeat your question, please?
So, so the letter of credit that's being issued for Phase, that includes Phase Three and Four, my question was, is because these are private roads, they're not public roads, does the letter of credit include the costs to install those roads? And my understanding is the village administrator said yes.
I do not believe that it's contemplated that they are going to include the roads. It will include the utilities, even though they will be privately owned, as far as I know. Mr. Ammon?
I don't know. It's water, sewer, roads, stormwater, and the traffic.
Is that your understanding, Mr. Seatman?
Yes.
Okay.
All of them?
Okay.
So that's a yes.
Even better.
Thank you.
Even better.
You still have the floor, do you have any more, Mr. Decourcy-Bauer?
No, I'm sorry, that was, that's it.
No, you're, I just want to make sure. Unless anybody has anything new that would like to speak a second time, it would be appropriate to make some type of a motion to either, if people need more time to think and not send it to the board, that they could postpone, table however, deny, I don't anticipate that's going to happen, or make a motion to send it to the village board.
And are we taking this one by one with the rezon and then the PUD agreement? Or do you want it both?
I think they're tied together.
Okay, so for clarification, they're tied, and this is going to get a little confusing for a second, but so I'm just going to clarify. I do believe they are, or at least the way it's written on the agenda, it's tied together, that we would change the zoning and approve the PUD, the way it's written. And this plan commission, these joint meetings, you know how this works, even though they're all sitting here, which I like it, because the village board gets to hear everything everybody's saying, once we as the plan commission make our recommendation, and Mr. Rhodey, please correct me if I'm wrong, once we make our recommendation, then it goes to the village board. So, but yes, I think they are tied together, it's written as though they're tied together, that was the understanding, I think, throughout the process, so.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a recommendation to the village board to approve the rezoning to, looking RM3 for the property, and also to recommend a PUD agreement contingent on the applicant addressing the items that were brought up in the April 19th meeting. I can, not join up, now, join up, I am commissioning.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded for the plan commission, and we would be in discussion, may I ask a question of clarif, well, I can. I'm going to ask a question of clarification. On the 19th meeting and the list that was list, on the items that were listed, the items that were listed by the village engineer, I believe that the last item you listed was, I just want to make sure the well is included in that. And I think it was, I just want to make sure for the record, but I believe it was. I was, no, it wasn't.
No, it wasn't.
No, it wasn't. Can you clarify for me, are you including in that, that the securing of the well in the process the village is already going through, Mr. Decourcy-Bauer? If that was not intended to be part of your motion, I, I just need clarification on that for myself.
I guess I think from my perspective, the well is critically important to the future of the village opinion. I would lean on, you know, the village attorney to say, is it a separate process, and is it appropriate to include it in this? Or is it something that, you know, now we've sort of started the main proceedings, is that sort of the ball is on that front? I don't, that makes sense.
It should be treated as a separate process and not linked to the matter under consideration this evening, because it will go its own course, the well acquisition aspect. Does that answer your question?
It was my question, yes.
It does, in which case I would, because of the actions the board has taken, I would exclude it from the motion, and the list that the village engineer stated would be the list that would be included.
Okay, so the motion was made as stated, so that was just, I had that for discussion. Any discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Last, were there any nays? Because that's a unanimous vote outside of obviously the missing members. Just wanted to clarify. So that is the recommendation to the village board.
Sorry, I think that's their adjournment here. I think the next item would be to adjourn the joint, adjourn the joint.
So, so at this time, and, well, it's, it's up to the plan commissioners if they want or not, I would need a motion, are they going to be appropriate to get a motion from the plan commission to adjourn that meeting? And then we will move into the village portion of this same issue, let the village board know ahead of time. After we get done with the village portion of this issue, I'll call a recess, and then we'll head into the village board meeting. Obviously, plan commissioners, you are more than welcome to stay and, and, you know, enjoy a fun night of, of village board meeting, but you are not, it's not mandatory.
Also moved to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the architectural board and plan commission portion of this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Plan commission is adjourned. The village board, one second, we're going to do the village board meeting. Now only the plan commissioners were released, and if they do want to leave, they obviously So, now we have the village board, as you heard from the meeting that was just before us, with the plan commission, architectural board. Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding recommendations of the architectural board and plan commission as more fully described in Agenda Item Two above, and because it references that, I just want to say, obviously this is the petition to rezone to RM3 and the PUD for multiple family residential, and the allowance of four possible phases of construction, and the proposed plan unit development agreement as more fully described in Agenda Item One, number one above. And you guys already heard the list, but obviously it was referenced from the April 19th Plan Commission that the, our village engineer listed off. That is our item on the agenda currently before us.
I have questions? Is this the panel going to do that or not?
Yes. Trustee, Ballshugger, the floor is yours.
I just have a few questions. Is there, if this goes through?
Where are you drafting this to?
Probably Mr. Seatman or maybe even Ryan. Is there a timeline for each and all of the phases to be completed? Ryan? I don't know who.
There isn't?
Nobody? I don't know who to ask.
If you direct them to come up, they'll come up.
Who do I answer to?
Either one. If you want to ask.
Mr. Seatman?
Do you have a timeline, assuming this goes through with us in a timely fashion, do you have a timeline of each and all the phases to be completed, started and completed? I wish I could give you a great answer on that, but, well, as you've heard tonight, we're going to do Phase One and Two together, and get that whole southerly half done. And then it'll be market driven as to how quickly we move to Phase Three and Four.
Okay.
I believe that the two family units will have a stronger marketing presence than the four families, so I'm hoping that it will push it north fairly quickly.
Would there ever be a chance that you'd want to make the fours into twos, since it seems, you said the market's better for that?
I think we want a range of price values, and so that's why we brought the fours in, because we can do the fours for about $100,000 less than the two family ones. So, I think we want to have a good broad spectrum of product to be able to sell.
Okay. And I think this would go to you. One of the people that spoke had mentioned the workers' comp insurance is too low. What is your thought on that?
I don't believe that's the case. We, we will work with the village attorney, if he feels that that should be higher in the PUD agreement, we'll do it. But I believe those standards are pretty regular, aren't they, Craig?
Yeah.
It'd be our normal numbers that we would see fit to use.
Okay. And also, something that was brought up was the developer can change the size and layout of the condos. What are your reasonings behind that from what is given to us here?
I don't think we're going, we're talking about that. You've given us enough flexibility to put in different buildings at different locations. We've given you the designs already, so we have the flexibility to move them around.
Oh, I see.
Just so we have still a variety of looks, so we want this to look more like a subdivision than a condo project, so we'll look for enough variety to give that feel.
And that's the last I had for you. The next would be for Ryan. Thank you. Someone had brought up, Ryan, that the new well could hurt, that our, if we put in a new well, it could hurt their private wells and sewer systems, because I've got places in Tonhamerton, and it's, you know, private, it's a well and sewer. Is there a possibility that by putting a new well in, let's say in five years, it could hurt the homeowners who have their own private wells?
At May 10th Village Board meeting, I provided the board with a memo that had a number of steps that are required to actually develop that well, one of which is modeling what the recharge area is, modeling what the impact area is, so that it doesn't impact private wells.
So they.
That needs to be approved by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, so that's, that's another reason why the village has had the foresight 20 years ago to evaluate options for future well sites, because there are fairly significantly large setbacks that are required to develop a municipal well. And as the village, you know, furthers its land use plan in this part of the village, it's, it's important to make sure that certain things aren't done too close to where that well site could be, so that you can preserve your ability to develop that in the future. But that, that needs to be evaluated and approved by DNR, and be acceptable, so it won't impact the wells that are in the area.
But that hasn't been done as of yet.
No.
So we could possibly be going through this, what is it called, eminent domain, for a reason that isn't even going to, that maybe that's not going to work?
Well, I, it's my recommendation, and the village attorney's recommendation, to preserve the village's ability to develop that site in the future as a well site. So, if you've noticed in the area with the windrush development coming in, the overland trails development coming in, the sandhill development coming in, that, that site that was identified 20 years ago as being feasible for a municipal well site is getting boxed in. As the county highway, if, when, if or when that gets developed through that parcel, there are factors that impact the, could impact the village's ability to even have that as a feasible site, which is why this step is being taken by the board, is to preserve your ability to do that.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Anybody else?
Yes, thank you. Can I just have the recommendation or motion restated again, just for clarification, that's being recommended to the village board?
It was recommended to the village board.
Yeah, I think.
Sorry, I have to fend the exec. Mr. Decourcy-Bauer, one second. It was recommended to the village board to approve the rezoning to RM3 and the PUD multi-family residential, and allowance for four possible phases of construction, and the proposed plan unit development agreement with the contingencies of the list that was listed off by the village engineer from the April 19th meeting with, do you want that list?
Is it the list from the minutes of the April 19th meeting?
It's the list from, it's the list that was read off by the engineer. I'm not looking at those minutes, so I do not know if I, if I have to re, if I have to ask again, I can, but if you want me to list them, I will.
No, I just have a question about the list then.
Oh, okay.
That's okay. So, on the memo sent from our village engineer to our village administrator on April 14th, which was read at that plan commission meeting, and then reviewing those minutes, it looked like number two, one of the key points was is the PUD agreement would require a letter of credit, and would be providing credit for Phase One and Phase Two, and then tonight I heard that there's a letter of credit for all four phases, so I was just looking for clarification on that.
They've committed to all four phases.
For all four phases. And then, just for clarification again, because I couldn't speak in the first meeting, just making sure that that was for all infrastructure, including roads, utilities. Okay.
The, the key, in case, it's been stated and talked about, but just to clarify for everyone, we keep talking about Phase One and Two and Phase Three and Four. While there are four different phases, One and Two tied together and will be done together, Three and Four tied together.
Correct.
You can't have a Three without a Four.
Right.
Can't have a Four without a Three. So, we keep talking about One and Two and Three and Four. It probably could have been simpler to call them One and Two, but.
That's what I just wanted to make sure.
Why, why do it that way?
I just couldn't ask in the first one, so.
I think you probably picked up on the tone of the conversation, we keep talking about One and Two and Three and Four.
A and B.
They are, they are definitely exclusive with each other.
Thank you. That's, I just wanted to clarify, make sure I understood. Thank you, that's all.
Are you sure?
Yes, sir. Thank you. No, that's it. Oh, she asked one of my questions, so I'm good.
Anybody else want to speak?
Yes.
I've just drawn them.
Yeah.
I didn't think so. Okay, thank, well, we got some things going on. Sorry. We did not have a motion, but it, it's up to the board to do with this item, the recommendation from the plan commission, and do with this item as they wish. They could postpone, they could approve, they could deny, they could do, obviously all.
I make a motion to deny.
Okay.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, it has been moved and seconded to deny, it's been moved and seconded to deny the recommendation from the plan commission, I'm sorry, to an RM3 PUD multi-family residential, and the allowance of four possible phases of construction, and the proposed plan unit development agreement that was sent forth by the plan commission, and the list of contingencies from the April 19th meeting, which the engineer listed off. Discussion, you made the motion, the floor is yours first. If you want it, you don't have to speak.
We were all elected by the citizens of Heartland. What I heard tonight is just the tip of the iceberg on what I hear everywhere else. Nobody wants us. I don't want it. I mentioned that in the first meeting we had, that I thought it was wrong for Heartland. So, I wanted to deny it.
I just wanted to.
For the citizens of Heartland, majority of citizens.
You seconded, trustee Conner, so the floor will be yours.
I had the same sentiments as trustee.
I had the same sentiments as trustee Anson and listened to the people out there. I'm not opposed to development, but just in a different capacity.
Anybody else want the floor?
Just for a question. Did anybody that spoke tonight that was against it, was from Heartland?
Yes.
Who?
Windrush.
One person?
If you want him to read it back, she can read him back.
No, I was just curious, because I kept talking about these subdivisions, and I didn't, I'd like to know how many really are Heartland residents versus Bergen residents that didn't want it. Because like, you know, what you're saying now is that there's a lot of people.
My call, our, Ms. Igle's going to do it.
It appears there were three. We had a Whistling Hills Circle address at Upland Court in the Southern Oak Drive. So three.
Just.
Where you want to share.
The floor is still yours, too. I'll yield. You're sure?
I want you to finish. I'd like you to finish.
You just finished.
Is he done?
Well, I guess one of the problems I've always had is if I have a piece of property, I bought the property, I invested in it, I wanted to do something with it. I think I had that right. And if, if people moved out here because there's extra room, it's country land, what if we wouldn't let you move out here because we didn't want you either? I mean, at what point do we say, we can't have any more people out here, there's just so darn many? And it's just, it's hard for me to say if I owned a piece of property and I wanted to develop something that fell within the guidelines of the village, how can people that have no financial investment in my property tell me I can't do that because it's going to be too many people? Or, you know, I guess that kind of bothers me. I don't want somebody to tell me, hey, I'm a condo, you can't, you can't do this or that. I don't have property, I have a condo. Then I go to bed early. And it just bothers me that we get into a situation where somebody has an investment, there's a lot of money invested in a future development because he wants to make it better, he owns a property, and we say you can't do it because it's just too close to my property or you're down the road. And the thing with traffic and the extra traffic, these are all county roads. It has nothing to do with us. The county roads are, they're jammed up. The county's got to do something. And we don't, we can't do anything about a county road. So it just kind of concerns me. I guess I go back to, this country is going right now as everybody's losing rights and using ownership to things that we do. I mean, it just bothers me to see that, to hear that there's so much animosity. We don't want any, and the animosity is not that it's bad outside of we don't want any more people living out here with us. There's a whole bunch of people coming from the city of Milwaukee and Brookfield and everything coming out this way. There's a lot of people moving out here. And it just kind of concerns me because I have a hard time telling somebody, hey, you own the property, you invested in it, and you can't do anything with it because your neighbors don't want to. That's all I have to say.
Did you ready to go once?
Did I?
No, I'm just, no, you don't think you did. Go ahead. I was just trying to.
I would just like to make a comment regarding what was just said. I do think it's fair that people, even if they don't live in the village, if their property is adjacent to this or this development is going to impact them, I think it's fair that they can get up and speak on it. And I do, I live up in that area, and the roads really are not safe. I don't take Young Bluff at all anymore to try and get off on Highway K because you sit there for a long time and the way the roads are, it's just not safe. And I do agree, they're county roads. But maybe we have to pressure or some way get the county to say, you know what? These roads aren't safe. Your county road goes right through the main part of the village. And maybe we need to get them to fix the roads first. I don't know. But, you know, the saying that, we have, with that being on the northeastern part of the village that abuts, is it Lisbon? Is that a butts on that?
Lisbon, Merton.
You know, to have people from there come in and talk to us, I think is only fair, because it isn't surrounded. And we've got Town of Merton all the way down Merton Avenue and down, what is it, North Avenue? That's all Town of Merton. Some of it's Town of Merton, some of it's village, so it all goes back and forth. But I do agree the roads are unsafe in that area, and something needs to be done. That's it. I yield.
Anybody else? Trustee Connors, you have the last one. It'll still be open after me. So I'll take the floor. I just have a few things to say, and I guess first I want to say, you know, to the people I serve with, I think that this is, this embodies what government is supposed to be. People that can respectfully disagree but still have an ideology that's for what's best in the village, so to the people I serve with, I respect them a lot. For myself, and my opinion is, there are, I don't think that the density is too high. That's only me saying it. I can understand and empathize with people that live around there really being very worried. I know that right now, from the village perspective, which I try to look at a broad view, Bristol Cone Pines is having a very hard time, and I'll explain why. Those homes were built 20 and 30 years ago. And when someone comes to the village and they can buy a $700,000 or $900,000 home that's been lived in for 20 or 30 years, or you can pay $100,000 more and have a home that's brand-new, actually what happens is it does drop their property values. And the last time we went through the tax cycle, that's exactly what happened. Their home values came down, but the $300,000 or $250,000 home actually went up. So the people that have less are actually paying more, which is fine. But when we talk about lower tax values, when you put a brand-new set of single-family homes right next, you know, single-family lots, single-family homes, subdivision, next to an old one, it does drive their property values down. It isn't those people moving out here. I can speak for that because I am those people. I moved to Heartland, and I moved in a Hart Ridge subdivision, and the first place that I had was $825 a month, and I rented from 2005 until 2010. In 2010, I finally had had the means to go out and purchase a home, and there was only two to choose from. One was a foreclosure, and one, in my opinion, was a dump. So I chose the foreclosure. And while it is not as nice as the homes that are going to be built, and it's definitely not as nice as the homes that are in Bristol Cone or Merton or Lisbon that are all being built, that are in these big subdivisions, I raised my four kids in it, and I am those people. If it wasn't for homes being built, I would have gone somewhere, but I went and ended up in Heartland. I went to Beawaki and looked there first. Cheapest rent I could find was 1,500 bucks, but I came to Heartland. So I guess I just want to say, I am those people, and I'm grateful to be in this village. And each and every one of you, including whether you live here or not, in the village of Heartland, we are here, we're lake country, but we don't have to be that scared of people coming in, because some of them are like me. And yeah, I'm sure some of those people, whatever that is, is going to come in here someday, but I am those people. And I don't personally think that 500 and 600,000 condo's, be them single-family condos or four-family condos, are what's going to make our, make our village a poor place to live. It makes me sad to hear of people wanting to leave if this development goes through. But I looked today and I checked it. And if I'm not mistaken, it was within the last 30 days. The average time on a market for a home or a condo is 31 days in southeast Wisconsin. So if someone wants to move, while I don't want them to, I want them to stay here. The wave of people that want to move here is intense, and I don't know of any homes that are selling below the asking price unless someone puts something astronomical. It doesn't mean I'm right, it just means it's my opinion. I do think this is within what a comprehensive plan is. It is good for the village, it does help the village residents in keeping a lower tax payment on their own home. It helps the village businesses, because all of that is a pool of money that's all spread about. But that's not my number-one concern. It's not because it's like, hey, we can keep taxes low. I always hear that, that you could get a tax base, you're just chasing the money. No, I'm not. I just want to keep the door open, because there's a whole lot of people that want to live here, and I bet you are going to be outstanding people, and I bet you some of them will even be in a room like this 20 years from now, facing this board or the people sitting at this board, saying, we don't want anybody else to come in here. But that's because they have gotten in. And I just, I'm grateful that I live in lake country, and I'm for this, and I think it is going to be a decent, I think it's going to be a decent development. But I also empathize with every single person that is, you know, irritated or upset, and I hope that we just continue to be the good community we are. I'm just giving my opinion. I just wanted to say that. I think it's a, I think it's a decent development for the future of Heartland, and it was a decent development on the comprehensive plan for, you know, 10, 15 years, and no one really said, hey, that's a bad idea. Lastly, I'll just add, there is a single-family condominium development that is very close, and they're selling like hotcakes. There's also about 228 homes going up within a mile of that area, and those aren't in Heartland, so, you know, but those are single-family homes. So I just wanted to say that, and, but I do, again, I respect my colleagues that I serve with, and I respect their right, even though we disagree sometimes, this is how government is supposed to work. And for all of you that live close to this and all of you that spoke, I respect you, and I respect your opinion. This isn't something about chasing tax dollars, it's about growing our community, because no matter how much we try to stop that wave, there is no stopping it. It's coming, and there's good people that want to live here, and I can't wait to see them, especially like at the Beer Garden on Thursday. So with that, I yield the floor.
First, I'd like to thank the developer for taking some of my thoughts into consideration that I brought up a few months ago with some of my concerns. So I appreciate that, because I've really reviewed the floor plans. I'm a big believer in life cycle housing. And just for clarification, I think there should always be an entry point and an exit point for a resident to live in a community so that they can continue to prosper in a community. To the President Van Der Stijl's comments, I do think we have multifamily opportunities here for entry-level housing in the village of Heartland. We want to continue to offer different types of cycled housing for individuals. Therefore, I would say that a condominium type of complex like this does offer a specific person a type of means who would like to exit a home. Obviously, you can tell that the housing market, there's a shortage, they're going really quickly. And I do think that we want to continue to preserve the current homes that we have here. So I don't necessarily always look at a development like this as an opportunity just for new people to come in. I look at it as an opportunity for the current residents that are here or in lake country to continue to stay here. Maybe they want to sell their current home that they have because they have decided to downsize, and maybe they want to move into something like this. And they want to then have their family and their children be able to live in the homes that they then lived in, that were three and four-bedroom homes and so on. So I do commend the fact that it does enter into our comp plan and that there's life cycle housing. I do want to go on record that I am a little concerned about the price. I think I brought that up a while ago. So I don't think the developer, the engineer, or the board would be not knowing that I wasn't. I've been very concerned about that. However, I am concerned about price in just general for our residents. So that being said, I do appreciate the fact that it does enter into the life cycle housing, which is, I think, what our comp plan is really trying to focus on, which is broadening our opportunity for residents to live, work, and play in the community. Thank you.
So just to clarify, anybody else? So to clarify, I want to clarify that the, that the motion was to deny this development and the PUD request along with the stipulations of the list. That was the motion. If no one else has anything to add, no one at all, last call, kind of? So I'm going to call the question. An I vote, an A, the first round here, would be to deny. And then I would say all opposed, that would be to keep this going. Obviously, negative motions. I'm just clarifying, once that motion was taken, all it means is basically, if, we'll deal with it as it goes. Sorry, I don't want to make it sound like I'm trying to push it, you know where I'm at. Okay. All right, so if, I'm going to call the question. An A vote would be to deny this. All in favor of denying this project, all in favor, say aye.
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 Do it. A roll call, please. We got to.
Trustee Anson?
Aye.
Trustee Durrell?
Nay.
Trustee Myers?
Nay.
Trustee Wassiger?
Aye.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Lucky?
Nay.
And, as I feared, so.
Nay. So the, the motion to deny fails, obviously a trustee could make a motion to approve. That's the hard thing with sometimes negative motions, not emotions, negative motions, sorry, which is nothing wrong with. I'd like to stress that while nothing does have to be done, it would be appropriate to make some type of motion since we have a denial, even if it's to table it or what.
I'll make the motion that we approve the rezoning to RM3 PUD multi-family residential and allowance of the four possible phases of construction and proposed planned development unit agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the rezoning to RM3 and the PUD multi-family residential and the allowance for four possible phases of construction in the proposed planned unit development agreement. I'm only doing this for clarification. Did you mean to include, like, the recommendation?
I'm sorry, yes.
No, that's okay.
Which would include, yes, the recommendations.
Including the recommendations that came from the Plan Commission.
From the Plan Commission.
And it's been seconded. Mike, that's your clarification on the second. That opens it back up for discussion. Last call for discussion. I'm going to call the question. Obviously, an A vote this time would be to approve it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
You got it. We have it, it was the same vote. And obviously, I respect you all very much, and I really mean that. This is government at its finest. That motion does pass on a four-to-three vote. With that being said, and you know we're all ready for this, I am in a request from this village board that they allow not only the people attending, but ourselves, to take a recess before we get into the other items for the village board. Would that be allowable to everybody?
Agreed.
Other than Mike? No, even Mike said yes, okay. All right, we're good.
We'll be in.
We will call this meeting to order. The joint meeting is obviously over with our long recess. The item now is consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes of the May 10th, 2021 meeting.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the May 10th, 2021 meeting. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is the consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments. This is in the amount of $227,685.47.
I make a motion to approve the vouchers in $227,685.47.
Second. Then moved and seconded to pay the vouchers as listed on the agenda and as stated in the motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Upstayed.
That motion is carried. The next item we have is consideration of a motion, motions related to licenses and permits. We do have a list. We have a bartender's list. These are bartender's operators licenses for Kaylee Bratt, Josie Jackson, Alyssa Petry, and Akila Mahanram.
I make a motion that we approve the four bartender's license as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those bartender's licenses. All discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda, this is for a street use permit. This is Tabby's Lake Country, 111 East Capital Drive, using their back parking lot. This is on 7/31/21 from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
I'll make a motion to approve the street use permit for Tabby's Lake Country on July 31st with a rain date of 8/28.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the street use permit on the date and rain date if needed. Discussion?
I just want to say thank you to Tabby for doing your due diligence of filling out all your paperwork and having all of it out nicely. So, thank you.
And sitting here during all that.
No, thank you, seriously. It helps.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is a temporary Class B beer and wine permit for the Heartland Business Improvement District to sell beer and wine on Wednesday, June 23rd, 2021. We do have someone here for that, and do you want to address the board on, whichever of you, but address the board on the status of that because this one's a little out of order.
Well, I think what we want to do is because the roads are going to be closed to certain businesses, the bid is offering to extend the liquor license so that we can sell beer and wine outdoors, outside of just our, inside our normal licensing place. So, like, on the street where Palmer's and Zesty and myself, that whole street is closed. So, there's not going to be any bikers going or anything, and that we can open up that area to extend where we can sell during the race time.
That would be for those taverns, the bid is looking to create that zone around the bike path, bike racetrack in order to be able to, just like the Chamber would or the Kewanas would, be able to sell beer and wine in that area and allow that to be an event space for them to have in that. And we can open that up and allow people to enjoy that.
So, where is it actually going to be shut off? Not at Goodwin, then?
All around the racetrack, all around the bike path track.
So, it'll be closed off up to North Avenue?
The road?
Yeah.
Yes.
I was confused. I thought it was just Goodwin, from Goodwin up to Maple.
Well, you're going to have to stop traffic so they don't come down and run into the track, run into the race track or area. So, we would move that up so people would just go by, um, BMO Harris down.
It'd be open to local traffic, but it would be very similar to the street dance where we would have it right around Rick's business there. We'd put those cones out like we do so people can turn around.
Will the back area, the, I want to say the back area, the, I don't know what the, is it Haight? Will that be open?
Haight will be very similar to Capital where we'll try to get people not to go down Haight because otherwise they'll be trapped.
So, Haight will be cut off at the entrance to the library.
Library parking lot.
Library parking lot.
So, will people be able to get to Hometown Pharmacy?
Yes. So, they'll be able to come down Haight Drive, past Beer Snobs, Alan Eats, and turn into his lot in the back lot. It'll shut off at that area behind the library.
Or they can go and park in front of his business. I mean, it'll be closed to local traffic. So, if you want to go to the local business, you'll be able to do that. But we don't want to have the road open so that people drive down Capital and then have to do a Y-turn and then come back out.
I got you. I got you. I'm looking out for you.
No, I get it.
Yep.
As long as, like, they can park in front for the handicap. They can't go up the steps.
Yeah, I mean, you got the...
A lot of seniors can't do that up the steps.
No, right, which is why it would be like closed to local traffic, similar to how we've done it for the other events.
So, will they just be drinking in that area or will it be walking alcohol? I'm just curious, like, would you have a little... Someone, Palmer's does their tent event. It's in that area. I mean, I like it. I can get, I can kind of record, but that's just me. Can you walk around with it? I mean, do we, I just think this needs to be a little clarification if we're going to just have it right in front of you, and then you'll have a little roped-off area that they can be there, and same with Steve observing outside. I don't see any problem with that whatsoever, but I don't know if we're, we don't have an ordinance that you can walk with alcohol, so... Delafield has one that you can walk with alcohol.
It would be looking to establish the event area around the racetrack and around where the roads are closed.
So, they can walk with alcohol?
They would be able to, they would be able to create, we would be able to create that area around the racetrack.
Okay.
What's the time, the time of the whole event?
I believe now it's, uh, first race is 12?
It says 10 a.m.
12 to 10:00 PM. They think they'll be shut down by 10.
11 till 10 o'clock at night.
This says 10 a.m., 10 p.m., but...
Is that the road closing?
Hold on, let's go.
Oh, you have the floor.
Donna, you had the floor. Let's do one at a time, only because, especially with Zoom, we don't realize it because we all see each other talking, but let's go one, if you have anything else, please keep...
I'm good. I was just questioning that, which I'm glad there were a long way.
Trustee Wallsager, and I'm going to go right down the line.
No, just go right to Rick.
All right. Trustee Connor?
Yeah, I was just curious when the alcohol would start being served, and I'm still, I guess, a little confused of patrons coming into the pharmacy, how they would be able to park in front of the pharmacy, and then would they got to make a U-turn to go around, or they can turn down, uh, what's that? Is that Goodwin?
You would be able to go down Goodwin. They would have to pull in front of the Hometown Pharmacy, get through their business, and come back out and do a U-turn, and come back past Palmer's and out the Capitol? Down Capitol.
Down Capitol to the intersection of North.
Right.
Okay.
Trustee Connor, are you anything else?
I'm done.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm like, I think I'm just tired. So, can you just tell me that one more time, Steve?
The path that you just told Connor, Trustee Connor?
This is the item for the drink, for the license.
So then it would, it's going to be roped off where? Again, one more time?
Won't be roped off. It'll just be designated.
Designated areas. Okay, never mind.
Designated area around the track.
Perfect. I just got confused there for a second. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the temporary Class B wine, beer and wine permit for the bid for June 23rd, the 2021 Bike Race Event.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the temporary Class B beer, Class B wine permit for the bid event around that track area. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now we have the, no, come on, pop up. We have the consideration of a motion to approve a banner for the bid for the Bike Race Event on June 23rd, 2021.
I make the motion that we approve the banner for the bid Bike Race for June 23rd, 2021.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the banner for the Bike Race for the bid. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Floor is yours.
Thank you.
Unless the motion maker wanted to go take the floor first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, yours is for you.
Okay. It's saying that they're proposing purchasing a new banner that would have on one side for Hometown Celebration, the other side would be Tour of Heartland. Who's paying for the sign? Is the bid paying for it? Is the tour paying any money toward it? Who's paying for this?
The, the bid would be purchasing their sign and it would go back to back with our existing sign.
Okay, so it's going to be two signs up there.
Yep, so coming one, one way on traffic north, or I'm sorry, it's east to west. One, going east, it would say Hometown Celebration in our website, our existing sign, and going west would be the Tour de Heartland, which is now the official name.
Okay, because then that kind of gets rid, I thought it was one sign because I thought, well, is it a guarantee that this is going to be in Heartland annually for X amount of years? But since it's going to be separate signs, that doesn't, that's not relevant. So, thank you. That's all I needed.
Yes, I just, this is not, in response, I just want to make sure I say this because I've seen it a couple of times now and it always says like not sponsored by or does not necessarily reflect the views of the municipality. So I was just like really kind of struggle with that because we actually did bring it to the board and the board did vote and it went through. So it does actually reflect the views of the municipality. So that's it. That's all I just wanted to say is I just don't sometimes understand that sentence. It just sounds a little wonky and it's so small. I don't even know if it matters sometimes, but but that's all I wanted to say.
Anybody else want to speak?
I just want to clarify on here because it does say, and that's how I interpreted, I think the same as Trustee Walsh, it says they are purchasing, propose purchasing a new banner that would be one side of the banner be Hometown and the other side would be Tour Heartland. I'm taking that as one banner, one, one on one side, one and not two banners hanging up there.
Right, we did check and it, they can't go back to back without seeing through.
Okay, but yeah, this made it sound like it was one banner and one side.
That was the original thought and we are able to get two banners. If it doesn't work, then it'll be on the bid to to figure that out. We already have our banner.
Gotcha.
We have one.
I do got something I want to throw in, only because I just want to make sure that the board is okay with it, but I think that the administrator or I think I got to put it on the administrator. I know it says Tour of Heartland logo on here. Do we have that logo yet? It's okay if we don't.
Michelle is on Zoom. I, as of this packet, we did not have a logo.
Okay, I just want to clarify for the, I want the board to at least clarify that it's okay because I hope that they know that the sign is not going to say Tour of Heartland logo. I just want to make, I'm, I'm just clarifying because
I get that and I missed the last meeting, so I
No, no.
I'm kind of a little bit behind, but when I talked to Michelle this morning and I mentioned that they were, said that they're still working on the logo.
Okay. I'm fine with it. I just wanted to clarify. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item we have are some of these items, items referred from the May 17th, 2021 Plan Commission Meeting. Consideration and possible action regarding Zion Church redevelopment, the church whose approval and rezoning is being sought from institutional to B3 central business mixed use district. So we have the review of the rezoning petition and the site and building improvements. I guess I just want to clarify that we're just looking for the rezoning.
We're looking to set the hearing for the rezoning.
Correct.
We put all of the packet. Obviously, we're looking to, the applicant is looking to rezone this to build the event center. So again, not really one without the other. You know, the developer doesn't want permission to build it, but not rezoned or rezoned without permission to build. So we put all the information together. As it's tentatively set up, we're looking to do the public hearing for June 14th, 2021. That would be just the village board meeting. That'd be a normal village board meeting. And then that next week in June 21st, it would go back to the Plan Commission because there are some details the Plan Commission has not finalized. And then it would come back to the village board if it's ready at that time, June 28th, for a decision of the village board. So unlike those joint ones, this one is going to have its own course due to the progress that it's going to have.
Just to clarify for the board, so we're just looking for the rezoning and to set the public hearing. That's the intention.
It just says to review the rezoning petition site, but the action is for the public hearing.
Yep, so A, so A is the reviewing of the rezoning petition, which is in order. B is the consideration of a motion to set the public hearing. So we are looking for B.
So I'll make the motion that we do a public hearing for June 14th of 2020.
One. Second.
One.
It's been moved and seconded to set the public hearing for June 14th, 2021. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is, this again is from the Plan Commission. Consideration of a motion to approve an application for installation of a second oxidizer in two storage tanks for CLD Digital at 535 Norton Drive.
This item did go to the Plan Commission. There was some good debate. One of the items was a sound concern. They did agree in their proposal, their original proposal to remove the outside air compressors and put them inside. It should help with the sound. It is an industrial area, so sound hasn't been a concern, but they have an existing oxidizer now. They're looking to put it, they have one oxidizer now. They're looking to put a second one next to that and then on the opposite end of their property, putting two tanks which would be fully enclosed with fencing and screening, so.
There's no noise issue on the current oxidizer?
We have not had any noise issue. It is in, you're talking about dead, dead middle of the industrial park. This, this site is, as middle as the industrial park as you can get, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve CLD Digital second oxidizer installation.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the installation of the second oxidizer and I anticipate that it was also meant the two storage tanks for that company.
Plus the two tanks.
Yep. That's what you intended?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have that was sent from the Plan Commission is consideration of a motion to approve an extraterritorial certified survey map for the property located at West 303 North 2582 Maple Avenue in the town of Della Field. As you guys hear me say, a lot of times when these extrateritorials come up, this does not affect the village of Heartland. We don't anticipate the village of Heartland will be up to this property line, but because we are a village, we are given the right to look into this because they are a town and we are a village.
I'll make a motion to approve the extraterritorial certified survey map for the property located at W303 and 2582 Maple Avenue in the town of Della Field.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the extraterritorial certified survey map for the property located at W303 and 2582 Maple Avenue in the town of Della Field. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Other items for consideration. Now we have discussion and consideration of a conceptual plan for development of of climate controlled storage units.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Joe Gresh. I live in the town of Della Field off of Lakeside Road. We're proposing a climate controlled storage project on Industrial Drive, just west of the Heritage Manufacturing Site and east of the Superior Storage Site off of Industrial. The, the project is a unique storage type project in that we offer extra large, or we call mega storage. So it's completely different than, than many, if not all, of the storage facilities that are located in the area. We, so two things that differentiate us are A, climate controlled, a far majority of our units are going to be all climate controlled. And then the second one is, is we're going after the extra large space market. We're not going after the big Class A motorhome storage. We're going after the B, C space, the B C motorhome RV market, boat storage. And then also there's a lot of businesses in the area that need climate controlled large spaces for document storage and just overall storage needs in, in this particular area. The Store It Right concept, this is the first Store It Right facility that we're looking to build in Lake Country. We're all, we're looking to do a total of three of them in this particular market. I am a local real estate guy. My last project, so you guys can have some perspective, is my company, we did the Beachscape Building in downtown Pewaki that faces the lake, just to give you a perspective of other projects that we've done recently. That was, that was the last one that we, that we completed. And I'd love some just general direction because we would like to take this to the Planning Commission in July. And I'd love to hear any general comments or questions if, if anybody has any, any questions about our use for this particular site.
So this is a concept plan. We did meet with the applicant and took a look at his site and told him the next step of the process was to do a concept plan in front of the village board. It is zoned for this type of use. There is a storage facility right next to it. I've been saying it's across from the post office, but it's more kitty corner across from the post office. It's at Vacant 3, 3 acre site, right, 3? So that's where it's located. That's what he's proposing. And again, concept plan, looking for feedback.
Go ahead. Floor is yours.
Yes, sir.
I think it's a great spot for it. And I think Heartland needs something like this. I know that if I was looking to store something that needed a bigger area of climate control, we don't have anything. It's in, and it's in a perfect space for it, so.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for your thoughts.
What's the average size of, I mean, I know it looks like there's some variance, but what if just
Our average size will, the space that we'll have the most of is about a 14 by 40, so about 560 square feet. We might try to get a few bigger ones, but I would say our average, if we took everything, would be right around 400 square feet. So average, average two car garage. But our far majority of them are towards, skewed towards, towards the larger end.
So I'll make the motion that we move this forward to our Plan Commission for them to make the assessment of the project.
That's very good. Thank you.
I second it. It's been moved and seconded to send this concept to the Plan Commission. Any discussion? I think it's a really good idea.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
We're waiting through the whole. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Quickly.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve contractor's application for payment number two in the amount of $64,901 to Always Contractors, Inc. for the 2021 Utilities Program.
Dave Felkner, Utility Supervisor. Like you stated, Always Incorporated is seeking its second, second and final payment. The utility project for the 2021 season is complete. We will hold a retainage of about approximately $4,800 for if there's any sod that's dies or concrete settles. So we will hold some retainage money. The village staff recommends payment to, of the sum of $64,901 to Always Contractors Incorporated for the work completed.
Also moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item we have is discussion and consideration of a creation of a policy related to proclamation for committee members upon their departure. This, this item was brought by members of the board, so I'm going to turn it over to them first. Whoever was the person that initiated or, or the person that seconded it, however.
Yeah, I can speak first. So I had an opportunity to serve one full term on a board. I've served in my elected position for two years. I'm coming up, I'm now in my third year. I was appointed as a citizen for my first year. In my second year, I had an opportunity to sit on an actual board, so I kind of didn't really know the process and so I kind of learned the process. And I think we are doing a fantastic job of finding ways for more individuals in our community. And actually, I sit on the library board, so we do have some individuals that sit or outside of our community to be a part of a certain board. And so as we were kind of walking through this new appointment process, I wanted to find a way that we could recognize them for their volunteerism and their commitment that they've given to the community. I don't necessarily know the right way to go about it, and so I didn't, I wanted it to just be kind of a consideration or at least a discussion about it because I wasn't really sure what the process was before or if we even had a process. But I really like the idea of a proclamation. I think that it's one of the highest honors that we have here in the community and these individuals are serving their time for things like Bark River or the library or police and fire. I don't have the specifics of what I think we should work out. I think we should allow like staff to kind of come up with that for what would sit in their purview. But I do, wanted to just discuss it and try it on and see what the board thought about it. So I asked the administrator to put that on the agenda for us to discuss. So.
You're done?
Yes.
Yield.
So I, I was the second person. I agreed with Trustee Lucky when she recommended this. I do think that people give their time, they volunteer, and I think that it should be recognized. Again, the details of how we go about it, don't know. I just think that we need to make sure that we're recognizing people and if it's a policy, we're less likely to miss somebody that has served, say, a year's time, at least one full year on some board or committee of saying thank you because it will bring more people wanting to volunteer, wanting to step forth, knowing that they're being recognized for their time. I just think it shows appreciation. So that's why I seconded the idea.
I guess I have a comment.
Sorry, Mike. That's okay. And if Dan has done.
I yield the floor, yes.
They used to have in kids' sports, a champion, you won, you were first place, you won, okay? We've changed things. Now, if, if you show up for practice, you get a participation award. I, a proclamation is something special. It's not like, oh, Christ, you did a great job. You were on this board for a week and a half and missed three meetings and, you know, I mean, it's like, I want to have this meaning something. I mean, you look at the honors we've given out right now, a police, a police, what, 32 years? I mean, hell, that's more than any of our committees. And you look at, you know, at a building now, we got named after somebody that was here when the guys came out in the wagons. You know, I mean, it's like, we just, I, I don't want to dilute that really outstanding thing that, hey, you, you, you really spent a lot of dang time here. And a participation thing is like, fine, hey, thanks a lot, you came. And we can give them a certificate, but I don't want to give, I don't want to make something that is sort of sacred, a proclamation that the village is making for somebody's long-term efforts and that thing, you know? I guess I'm real concerned about, we used to I'm real concerned about. We used to have winners and losers. Now we got participants, you know, and I just don't want this. I don't want to. I don't want to deteriorate the honor that goes along with having a proclamation. So that, you know, you just don't see it. Even our President Biden doesn't do it yet. But, you know, I'm just a little concerned with that deluding that I think it's a good idea. This honor, everybody should be honored to come out, you know, to do it and being paid for it, most of them. And the idea of making it not special, that, you know, gosh, you did more than just have lunch here. You did it a long time, you know. And no, look, and I'm looking, I came over here on the horse. And I don't want that. I'm not talking about myself, but I'm talking about, well, I've sat here over the years and seen the people that have received these things. It's like, that's a hell of a lot of time that you've done. You've made a lot of commitment to that to that village. And I just don't want to. I just don't want to deteriorate that really outstanding honor, because I want winners. I mean, there's some winners in this community. You look at our DPW guys that are here, and they're retiring, and police guys, and you look at people at the at the library, and all these people are, they've been here a long time, and they know where all the skeletons are. And it's a it's just something I just don't want to turn into a participation award. But I think it's great that we honor people. Thank you for being on, you know, and thank you for being elected for one term. And thanks for being elected. Did not make it elected for the next term. I mean, it's like, come on, how when do we draw the line? So that's just personal. Sorry.
No, I was gonna say, I think it's a great idea, but I think that's both Trustee Lucky and Trustee Doro. That's why they left it open, so we can have a healthy discussion and determine guidelines of what what, you know, Dr. Treys a proclamation and what maybe doesn't. So, I mean, I think it's a great thing that we bring it up and we start talking about how do we recognize people for their their service. I mean, a lot of people donate their time, and I think it you should be recognized and show appreciation, so future people can come and do it as well, and that we appreciate them sacrificing their personal time to help grow the village. So I think it's healthy to have discussions and set guidelines.
You're done?
Floor is yours.
Okay. I agree with what has been said, but I I feel it isn't just the time, because people can put in their time, and all of a sudden, it's gone by. It has to also recognize the deeds and works that they've done. You get somebody, let's say, that shows up for a meeting once a month for 20 years, but yet nobody but they haven't really given something really special. I think it has to also include their they have to have done something in addition to their time. And I think the proclamations do have to stay very kind of like the ultimate thank you, you know, we couldn't have gotten where we are without you. But maybe we can come up with, you know, thank you for your 30 years little award sheet. I don't know. But I think the proclamations have to stay as the ultimate platinum award. And I yield.
Yes. I like the fact that they brought it up. But again, I think that the proclamation is that's like getting a championship trophy. So we need to work somewhere in between that, yeah, I think it's great if we recognize people that donate and volunteer their time and and do things for the village, even if it is only a year or two years. But they shouldn't get an award for it. It should be a really nice, hey, thank you very much, but publicly so the public can, you know, the public can hear what they did. But not not a proclamation. The proclamation is that's that's it. That's a championship. That's you just won, you know, everything. You're you. You did great. And I'm not I'm not forehanding out participant participation trophies. You know, that's not how this world works. So we got to figure out a way to do this in a in a really good manner, but not not hand out a big trophy to them for sticking around for a year. I'm yielding.
Um, I guess, I always say that. I don't know why I say I guess, because I don't guess. I I'm going to speak. Well, it was I I do agree with some of the comments of that it should be, I mean, a proclamation should be something really, really, really extra-special. And typically, I'm just going to say it. Typically, when something like that comes up on an agenda, and it is appropriate for the board to discuss, on every proclamation, it doesn't say the village president, or the village administrator, or DPW director, or police chief. It doesn't say that on there. It says that it's from the village of Hartland. And and we are in that role. With that being said, for us to create a policy, and it's up to the board, but I just want to say for this board, two times, someone has served the village for a very long time, and I've brought up creating a policy. Typically, in that regard, it was in the two times that it happened, there were certain people on staff in one department or another that had an opposition to creating that policy. But I will say this. I have never not created a proclamation or demanded one be created when it was requested. So with us having to create a policy, sometimes I do ask the question, if it's if it's not broken, don't fix it. I do believe it's up to our purview to decide those things. It is supposed to be something extra-special. I I do have to say, it wasn't requested of me to have this item on the agenda, but I also and and those trustees have the total right to have it put on the agenda. But never has it been requested of me by a staff member, a department head, an administrator, or a trustee that I have not created or demanded that a proclamation be created since I have been in the office of the village president in the village of Hartland. So it does, I I want to reiterate to department heads and trustees, no matter how this goes, while we can create a policy, I don't think anyone in this room has ever requested a proclamation for anyone, and it wasn't written. It just begs the question to me, and and it does leave some some thought there, because basically, we want to create a policy to make sure that we get that proclamation done, but no one's ever requested one. And any trustee at any time can, any staff member can, the administrator can, clerk can, anyone can, even people from the public can, but it's never been done, that I know of. And if you went to a staff member and then it didn't make it to me, that's fine. But I know of no proclamation request coming to myself, that I have not ever given it. And and with that, I yield.
So a couple of things to President Vanossell's comments. That's like great information to know. As a trustee who's fairly short in her tenure, I had no idea that that was an opportunity that I could go and request or demand a proclamation for a committee member. So that would have no clue, which is why I think I brought it forth, because there is no, like, actual trustee handbook, right, that says, like, you can do this and you can do that. So that. Also, I don't view this as a competition. So from a participation medal, or like the World Series trophy, or any of the comments going out, I actually view this as the highest honor. These are participants in our community that are serving their time and their talents and giving us their treasures. I think it's clear that this community has individuals that serve for a significant time and make an impact to our community. We've seen that over the course of the last at least three years that I've been sitting with the village, whether that's trustees, whether that was a village president, whether that was committee members. I mean, people really do give a lifetime. So for I'm not really sure how many times we would see somebody just get appointed for one year and then be off and then be turning them around that way. So I think there would have to be some specifics to trustee Walsh Lager's comments. Like, there would need to be, like, there are some impactful components that would make up for that. But again, I've never been told as a trustee by staff or a board member that if I were to request or demand a proclamation, it would be granted. So that is my reasoning for bringing it up for discussion. If that is the pseudo-policy, therefore, I yield the floor, and we can move on. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I would like to add to that, too, just because it was brought up that way. So I will tell you that with being involved with the chamber and volunteering a lot, I've gotten proclamations from Governor Walker, from from our governor, from Ron Johnson, proclamations of saying thank you, of being awarded whatever. It meant a lot to me. It was kind of a stand back of, like, wow, I was noticed. I was that was my point for this, that those truly meant something to me. It wasn't. It was that I was noticed for my my volunteering, for my my hard work, my everything. So it meant a lot, just like I would think a proclamation from the village, and depending on five, 10 years, I don't know what the magic number is of volunteering. I just think as a policy, and again, to trustee Lucky, I've never known either that we could approach anybody and then it would absolutely go through. News, again, if we don't know the procedure, then we only know what we know. So that's why I agreed to this being there. But I I also wanted to be known that I don't think it's a participation thing. I of that, hey, good job, you went on something and did it. It it meant that I my hard work is being acknowledged, and that means something to me, much like I believe it would mean something to other people. So setting the standards of what that may be, that makes sense to me of not just, hey, you were on it for a year and and good job. I think people should be recognized if they're taking their time to volunteer and be involved in our community, to help guide the community and make a difference. They should be acknowledged. I yield.
I'm going to speak, because I'm not going to say the same thing again, but based on the comments, I guess I just I said, there I go again. I said, I guess. I don't guess. I'm going to speak. To clarify my comments, number one, I did not say if requested or demanded that it automatically happens. I did not suggest that. And furthermore, there was been there's been some discussion in the last five minutes of, I didn't know I could do that. I couldn't this or that. One thing that's very important, I think, is to ask, because I didn't get the question either. No one called me and said, hey, what's going on? Now, I'm going to be totally honest, and I have the floor, so I'm just going to come out and say it. I have a feeling this has something to do with appointments that may have been made or not made in the last three weeks, and maybe they don't. Maybe right now, we're just going over proclamations. But I have a feeling it has something to do with that. But the reason I'm stating that, and I'm going to specifically say, and at this point, just want to make sure it's known to this board, I wasn't asked either. No one called and asked. I am sorry that I cannot, and I don't, lay down the line and give a tell a trustee exactly the way that they need to do everything. But what I do also think is that I'm not the only elected official on this board. And every elected official on this board went out to the public and said, I'm the right person for you to elect me. And if you but if you don't ask me, or the administrator, or someone on staff, what the process is, well, then you wouldn't know. But I I do not, I don't, if you don't ask a question, I can't answer the question. And to be quite honest with you, I I do feel a little bit like there's all of a sudden this impression that, oh, well, if if we didn't know that, because Jeff didn't write it down and put it in a policy, or this board didn't write it down and put a policy, then, man, we don't know. I'll answer the question. Ask. Just ask. And I will either say, I know, I don't know, or here's the process. And and that's what I will do. I I just want to be really straightforward, because not only do I sense the tension, but all of a sudden, the back and forth. And I'll hold my ground on it to not ask and come and say, oh, I didn't know, after being in office for two years. I suggest that people start reading. I can tell you this, every single person on this board had the opportunity to get a Robert Schrusel order book and a book from League of Municipalities that describes being on a board. And even coming in, there was other opportunities, like ride-alongs with the police department, and the the village attorney saying, I'll sit down and and talk with you and answer any questions you have. And I have always been forthcoming to say, talk to me, anything you want. I've tried to open things up, including having two members on a board be able to put something on, regardless of if it even went through the president. That didn't happen five years ago. So I'm just, I I'm, I I understand what you're saying, and just because we disagree, or I may disagree, that I don't think everybody should get a proclamation, I'm going to fall back on the on the same thing. If no one asked, how do we get a proclamation written, and no one's brought up a name saying, I want a proclamation written for this person to even allow it, even though I'm not saying it automatically would be granted, but it would at least be discussed. If all of that is happening, and then it ends up on jet ends up on an agenda, and someone elected is saying, well, I didn't know, but they didn't ask, then for me, I believe that that is directed at me that Jeff didn't write a policy, or this board doesn't have a policy. So there's not going to be a policy on every single thing. There's not going to be an ordinance on every single thing. That's why they have government. We 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 government is always living and breathing, and we make ordinances and laws and policies based on what we come across. But whether or not the board wants to write a proclamation for someone anytime they serve, and I'm not going to take away the importance of how great it is that people serve, is is almost neither here nor there at this point. What is there for the at this point, while I have the floor, is to say, I anybody can say anything they want, but I really hope that years in, people aren't saying, well, I had no idea. If you want an answer, call and ask. And I know the previous president would say that kind of thing, but I think for this village, not only for the employees, the trustees, and the residents, the one thing I have shown is that I will be a person of my word. And I don't know that I've ever had someone ask and then just blew them off, or blacklisted anybody from a board. I'm sorry. I'm I'm saying it. It's the way it is. And, you know, the board can do what they want with this. But I was never asked by any one of you to do a proclamation for anyone. And I don't know who this is about, or what the reasoning was about, but I can guarantee you one thing, no matter what anybody up here says, this is not just about, well, let's just, let's just talk about the policy, because I don't know how that proclamation policy goes. And I'm not going to just keep going. But I don't think this is as much about a policy as it is about a slam on me. So anyways, I'll yield the floor.
So just to clarify a few questions, I actually did call on May 4 and talk to our village administrator, just wondering the exodus I had called. And I that's where I got to where I was. So just to clarify that. And I apologize, President, if you feel that this is in any way personal towards you. It was literally an opportunity for our board just to have an open discussion and really just kind of relish in all the goodness that happens in the community. It has nothing to do with you personally. So I'm on record saying that, and I apologize if the board finds that. I just followed the actual procedures that we have to put something on the agenda. And I did ask, and I did then send an email, and I did get a follow-up. So like, I did ask. So just to clarify that. But thank you for your comments. And again, I apologize. It's not personal towards anyone. It has nothing to do with anything in particular. I literally just served one term and saw a process coming in, and I just wanted to see if there was a process exiting. So I think I've stated my comments enough. And again, just commend people for their time, even the board, for their time.
And again, I it was nothing personal. I don't know where that aggression's coming from. I really don't. I I just think people should be acknowledged. And and you're right, we have to ask. So I thought that's exactly what was happening, being asked, being put on an agenda. That's exactly the way things should go, to have a full discussion with the board. And I I don't know. I I'm sorry that you you think that this isn't a personal thing to you. It's not. It has nothing to do with any proclamation of anybody, other than the fact of if we should or should not acknowledge people. I think we should.
Do you want to make a motion?
It was a discussion.
Just discussion. Okay. I'm just making I'm just clarifying before I move on.
I wasn't looking for a motion. I just wanted to have an open discussion and just talk to the board about it. talk to the board about it because I didn't know that there was something you could do. So I appreciate the discussion, President.
Okay. So, next item, good. Uh, the next item on the agenda is discussion and consideration of a motion to approve both the BSI construction proposal, which includes a construction bid for Seltzer Orange and the BSI boardroom AV proposal for the village boardroom. I take it we don't have one here?
What's that?
They are not.
No, uh, we're just bringing this forward again, so we went out to bid, uh, got the bids back, included those in the packet. The original goal that we were shooting for is 160 with the construction, uh, the bid, low bid came in at 169.85, so it's nine over. We were able to work with BSI, they did lower their portion a little bit. We did come in with the AV, uh, from the AV budget, uh, then added some items and took some items, so a few, few items in, few items out, um, and that took that bid from 89.984 down to 89.055. So grand total, the original budget that we were shooting for when this memo, original memo was put together February 22nd was 281, 397, came in at 286, 390 and 37 cents. So if we are ready to proceed forward, we are looking for approval of that amount, get the contracts going and get construction rolling.
I'll make a motion to approve both the BSI construction proposals, which include construction bid for Seltzer Orange and the BSI boardroom AV proposal for the village boardroom in the total amount of 286,390 dollars and 37 cents.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the BSI construction proposal and the BSI boardroom AV proposal for the village boardroom, um, with the bid for Seltzer Orange. Discussion.
I have, I have a real easy question. I see on your alternative number one, men's toilet room wall heater, are we going to have one in the women's room, too? And are we each going to have a space heater underneath or at least a plug to bring in a space heater?
We, we did look at some options, for whatever reason, there, there is no heating in the men's bathroom on the, on the first floor. Uh, we did look at some options, but.
I did, what about individual?
There is one in the, there is one in the.
What about individual heaters for some of us that get really cold in here?
There, there will be more outlets, that's the good news.
I mean, like, under here?
That is not in the current bid.
Because one of the, one of the contractors gave me his card when he was at one of our meetings to do that.
I'll get you some insulated socks, how's that?
Okay. I'm good, I just was wondering, because we had kind of joked around about it, but, you know, it does get kind of cold for a few of us up here, once in a while. That, that's all I had to say, that was just my comment. I, I yield.
Should I call a question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. All right, now we got a consideration of a motion to approve an increase in ambulance
Good evening, Dave Jambres, Chief of the Heartland Fire Department. Uh, we were approached by our billing company back in February about possibly increasing our ambulance fees, so we kind of sat on it for a little while and did some research. Um, they also sent out the paramedic rate survey, which is on page three of this. Um, as you can see, uh, we're in the pink, everybody else, all the other ambulance services that LifeQuest takes care of, um, they're different rates, so, uh, shows what we were at, the average was 814 dollars and they're suggesting we increase to 20, by 25 dollars for the basic BLS resident rate and then so on and so forth, all the way down. Um, as you all know, prices are going up constantly on all of our supplies and that. We only receive probably about 45% right now of what we're billing out as reimbursement from Medicare and that. Um, we did go, I believe in 2019, we went to the, um, the bundle pricing, so all of our, all of our supplies are included in that and that's why you have the different rates for the ALS2, ALS1 stuff. So depending on the type of medications that we're using on those patients at that time, so.
I'd like to say, most of the rate increase with a statement that, what bothers me most is that when these people came and made us a bid, they guaranteed that we'd always had the best prices. They were the best one, were going to keep us right in line. And hell, we're, now we're about five years behind because this, unless Dave had gone and asked him about the prices, we'd still be down there, the lowest one in the county. So I move that we approve the new price, price increase, but also let's start bidding this out then, by every week, every couple of years to make sure that we're getting the right damn prices out there. Because we're getting killed with this Medicare, we're getting older, you're looking 45, 50, 60% if we're lucky, you know, and we got to just do it, everybody else is doing it.
Did somebody second?
I just need a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
I agree with the whole thing.
Trustee Lucky, Clara, I'm kidding.
Can you clarify your motion? Are you saying you want us to also bid it out each year? You're, you're making that part of the.
I'll make a motion that we approve the price increase.
Okay.
At this point.
And then direct stay for someone.
And then I will come back with something.
Yes, I'm sorry.
It's, it's been moved and seconded.
To approve an increase in the ambulance fees.
You mean, I can't agree with the whole thing?
Oh, you can. Uh, discussion, yeah, trustee Dorrell.
I just have one question for the mileage reimbursement.
Yes.
So the resident was moved up $2, why would we not move the non-resident up $2 then to giving our residents a little bit of the edge?
It's just a base, so we used to put in the mileage, so we had it calculated for each hospital, but again, when we went to the bundle pricing, Medicare and that looks at that and says, well, they could have gone to a different hospital with less mileage. So we just put a base rate in. Um, I'm not sure why they raised it $2 for our non-resident, but.
For our resident, we did, for our non-resident, we didn't raise it at all.
Yeah, so I'm not sure why, if they, they just did that and like, if you look at most of them, they're all about the same, same rate, so.
Yeah, everything else was raised up for a resident, non-resident, but that was the only one that caught my eye, so.
Mm-hmm.
I yield the floor.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Kind of on the same line, um, and I know obviously costs go up and as you stated, Medicare or whatever is only paying 45%. Um, but I know our costs go up, but the question I had was, you know, for the BLS for residents versus non-residents, and I get, obviously our residents were going to be less, but we went up $100 for the non-residents, but only $50, but I would think that whatever the starting cost was.
Sure.
Previous years, that whatever cost bumped it up here, it should be the same. So I was questioning why, and not that I don't want our residents to be less, but.
Right.
Yeah, I looked at it, that something changed the cost.
And we can, I can go back to them and tell them we want to raise or lower something to whatever you guys want to put it at.
If we go up, you know, 100 bucks for the, or $50 rather for the non, we only went 25. It's based, it's based on the cost, so that it's the same cost to you, other than mileage or something to do that, but whatever it is with the medical expenses and supplies and that, it would be equal.
Which one?
The first.
The first one.
Because we went 50 versus 25.
Yeah, that's my question. You done?
Yes, I yield the floor.
Dave, I have a que, chief, I have a question. On the base rate, is that, are the ALS, are those on top include, with the base rate? Are those two different charges? So let's say I had to call an ambulance and they have to give me, like they did the last time, they had to open up the special box and give me some special medicine, would that be 825 plus 1,200?
No, no, so it all depends.
So that 1,200 includes the 825?
Right, yeah, it's, they're all charged per what we do on scene, so if it's just a BLS call where we don't do any, any advanced stuff, you know, it's pretty much just a transport.
Okay.
At that point, then it's just the 825. If it goes into the ALS1 or ALS2 categories, that's giving you more medications, different procedures, so that's billed accordingly, that's not added up as a BLS and then plus the ALS, it's just that charge.
Okay, but it is, okay, that, good, that, that makes more sense. And then also the mileage gets added on to that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That, just, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I yield.
Anybody else?
Sorry.
We got a motion for that. I thought, right? But it's. I have an issue coming up, as you'll see in just a second, so I'm trying to figure it out right now. But, anybody else? Oh, go ahead.
Well, no, I guess, are you still going to talk on this one?
The floor's open.
We're not, okay, because obviously the motion was made to approve these things, but I, I would like.
Okay, so you just want the floor to speak.
Correct, yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. The motion was already made to approve them and I, I guess I take the motion by trustee Mike there to do it as, as stated, where I think we should look at possibly increasing the BLS for residents.
So the BLS.
Or the mileage as well as, I mean, some of the, yeah. I mean, because, like I said, I looked at the, uh, the BLS is, you know, supplies went up, so the supplies would go up the same amount for a resident versus a non-resident.
So move that up to 850 then?
Correct.
We might need amendment.
Yeah, I was going to say, we need to amend the motion on the floor.
That's what I was asking, to amend it, but that was what I would say before I voted on it.
You can make an amendment.
Okay, I'll.
I'm just saying it would be appropriate, because we do have a motion on the floor and you ain't get back right now, that gets kind of tough, because then you got to go to the person that's seconding it, then.
But you could amend the motion on the floor.
Yeah.
I can, okay, all right.
And if everybody's okay with it.
All right, I'll, I'll make an amendment to, um, Mike's, uh, uh, motion to approve with the increase of the BLS resident fee, um, from 825 to 850 and trustee Dorrell's questioning on the mileage.
To, to raise the cost.
Right.
Are you okay with that?
I agree.
I would agree.
Could you, two seconds.
I did, I, I would concur.
Okay, so the board is good with moving forward with that motion?
What are we going to raise the, we just going to add $2 to the non-resident rate then, too? Okay.
So that's 22.
Okay. And the board is okay with that? Okay? So we have a motion and a second with the changes that were stated by trustee Connor, which are okay by the person that made the motion, which was trustee Myers and seconded by trustee Lutke. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
This one's going to be a little weird, just letting you know right now. You'll help me out, right? I can take out.
What's the matter, what?
Okay, so, uh, there's consideration of motions to occur, confirm a committee appointment, so I'm just going to be, for just openness, I'm going to say to the board, on the Ice Age Trail Committee on our website, it was listed that there's a vacancy. We are almost 99% certain, we were, that's what we were dealing with. I want to approve Jacob Zull to that committee, however, I want to make sure, someone changed the website and it's not showing, showing a vacancy anymore. And I also wanted to reappoint the people that were on there. So what I want to do is appoint Jacob Zull to the Ice Age Trail Committee contingent upon that there is a vacancy. So automatically if there's a vacancy, he will go on. Otherwise, if I appoint, if we appoint him without that contingency, we are pulling off two people. Um, and the other, are you guys with me yet?
Yep.
Along with that, I want to appoint, reappoint Christina Callies and Jeff Ramagna. I don't know if I'm pronouncing that correctly. So it would be Christina Callies and Jeff Ramagna are getting reappointed. I also would like to appoint Jacob Zull, but he is contingent upon that there is a vacancy and I will call and talk to him about him and let him know. It's just the website we're seeing, we are quite certain that there's a vacancy.
Contact, okay.
If the board will accept it like that, if we have to split it up, we can do that, but that's.
Can I make a motion that we accept the appointed as read by the president with the contingency of there is the vacancy?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to, to approve those appointments, um, by the board. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. At, uh, at this time, we have announcements.
Good evening, Toramisco, Heartland Police Chief. Just had a couple of quick things, uh, sent this out on our staff update, I want to just reiterate it to the board. Our administrative assistant, our part-time administrative assistant, Lauren Stevenson, has accepted a job offer to become a deputy sheriff at the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department. So we knew that would be a potential possibility, we didn't know it would be this soon, unfortunately. But congratulations to her and unfortunately, her last day with the Heartland Police Department will be May 31st as she starts with Jefferson County, June 1st. And then I also just wanted to make note, um, our former Lake Country Municipal Court Administrative Chair, Bill Chapman, has passed away. Uh, Bill was a staple in the community in Oconomak, part of a lot of different communities throughout Waukesha County, was really well-known, so just wanted to pass that on to the, to the village board. He served as our administrative chairman up until April 23rd and he was with the administrative committee since inception of the court in 1988, so a long-serving member of the court. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Any other members of our staff that are not on camera right now but are here that would like to speak? Heartland Board President? Our residents that are still here? Announcements?
Um, I have two announcements. Um, one, I would just like to thank the flag in Dorton Post 294, uh, the Sons of the American Legion and Auxiliary for an outstanding poker run. I appreciate they had, um, over 175 riders, that's not including the ones that were like actually riding in cars. So just really want to, I appreciate the, the way that they handle our community with care, um, when they're out and so also appreciate the fundraiser that they did. And then I also wanted to thank, um, Hoggers Pub for the outstanding event and bringing the community together. Um, it really is remarkable here to see Heartland, we just, we don't let people down and we're just, we really, we really live up to that heart that's in our name. And so, um, being able to give back to someone who gives his time of us, um, was just an honor. So thank you for the platform and the environment to do that, to Hoggers Pub. Um, thank you, I'm done.
I'm good?
I'm good.
Anybody? Sorry that I keep coughing. Um, one thing I thought was kind of cool, coming into, um, Waukesha, is the moving wall. And it's a half-size, um, replica of the Vietnam War Memorial in Washington DC. It is being set up in, in Waukesha's Frame Park. And at 8:30, I'm sorry, between 8:30 and 9:00 PM on May 29th, the names of the fallen from Heartland in the Vietnam War that are on that wall will be, uh, read. I would, they invited me to go and read, so I will be going and reading those, uh, so anybody that would want to go and see that, or if you can't go during that time, it will be there for a few days to go and check it out. It's supposed to be really cool, I haven't actually seen it, but just wanted to let that be known and obviously, um, God bless our Heartland fallen that fought in that war, every war and, and served. That's the only announcement I have. So, I was going to say, I almost did it. Does anyone else have any announcements? Okay, since we're done with announcements, we now have a consideration of a motion to recess to close session pursuant to state statutes 19.851(c) considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which a governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility regarding the village administrator and to adjourn thereafter without reconvening into open session pursuant to 19.95, section That would be a roll call that we would need, am I correct on that? I believe we need a roll call to do that. I do want to reiterate just for everybody and especially our viewing audience and people here, we are not reconvening into open session. We will adjourn out of closed session and the meeting will be over. End of motion.
End of motion, second. I'll make a.
I'll make a motion, uh, to recess the closed session pursuant to state statutes 19.851(c) as stated by the president.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into closed session, may I have a roll call on that vote?
Trustee, trustee Anson?
Aye.
Trustee Doro?
Aye.
Trustee Myers? Trustee Washington?
Aye.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Lucky? President Farnsworth?
Yes. At this time, we'll take a few minutes. There's some stuff that's got to get cleared out and obviously, depending on some water and the.